Call this meeting to order.
This meeting is being recorded.
Of the Ellisville Town Council, Monday, January 11, 2021. Mike, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Jimmy, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. I have a thought we pause one more time to thank you for this beautiful little town we serve. We thank you for the many residents we have. We thank our employees. We ask you to keep them safe. Lead and guide our conversations tonight, give us the understanding we need to help this town move forward and grow. Be with the council members as they make the decisions that affect those plans. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Sandy, you want to call roll?
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Scott Oldham. William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
All right, first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, December 28, 2020. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved to second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Want to be on a second?
Several seconds.
All right, moved to second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, elections of officers for 2021. First, we'll do president. Any nominations?
I make a motion to make Scott Oldham president.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Aye.
What was that?
Abstain.
Okay, sorry. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Scott, do you want to take over?
No, you're doing fine. Go ahead.
All right, next we'll do vice president then, and then I'll let you take over. Any nomination for vice president?
I'll name it, Pam.
All right, I'll second that. Any other nominations? Seeing none, Sandy Rocco.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Scott, have at it.
All right, thank you, Dan, and good job all year long because it was a pretty difficult year. So I'm glad you got to do this first and show us how it got done.
Very different year.
All right, so moving to Board of Zoning Appeals, this is appointed by council vote. Russ Riles' term ends in 2020. I believe Russ has indicated he wants to continue. Is there any discussion from the council concerning this?
I just want to thank Russ for his comments and commentary in BZ meetings I've seen and even here. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does the council want to make a nomination?
I move we elect Russ Riles for a vote aboard of zoning appeals.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Sandy Rocco, when you have the chance.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Moving on to Parks and Recreation Board, this is here. We appoint one Republican by council vote. Serena Pettyjohn, apologize, terminated in 2020. Jimmy, do you know if she wants to continue?
Yes, she does. I know that for a fact. If she doesn't, I'm going to make her.
Okay. Is there council comments about this?
She's done a fantastic job for us. Of course, she's right there at the office and she can get the direction from Sandy when she needs it. And she's been around top of everything for the agenda for us. That's really run very smoothly with it. We really appreciate that, so.
Any further comment from anyone? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Serena Pettyjohn to board.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are several appointments, the annual appointments by the town council. The first is the Monroe County Emergency Management Advisory Council, which Chief Corman has served on. Chief, do you wish to continue?
Yes.
Is there a discussion amongst the council for this? Is there a motion for this?
I move we make Mike Corman Monroe County Emergency Management Advisory Council.
I'll second that. Sandy Rocco, when you have time.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for doing that, chief. The next is the Monroe County Solid Waste Management Board. Dan, do you wish to continue with this?
Yes, I would like to stay on.
Council conversation concerning this? Is there a motion concerning this?
I'll make a motion for Dan Swafford to continue with Monroe County Solid Waste Management.
I'll second.
Motion second. Sandy.
Dan Swafford.
Abstain.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Ellisville Chamber of Commerce, Mike Farmer. You continue with this.
Well, I'm for it. This is Michael Farmer.
Okay. Council comments? Council motions?
I move we make Mike Farmer Ellisville Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second that.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for doing that again, Mike. And finally, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Pam, do you wish to continue with this?
Yes, I'd like to.
Council comments? Council motions?
I'll move to appoint, reappoint Pam Samples to Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for doing those once again. Now move on to resolutions. The first is Resolution 27-2020 to amend Resolution 14-2018 regarding the Governor Park Tax Abatement Regarding a Date Extension. I'm not sure whether this is Darla or Kevin.
At the last meeting, this was presented to the council, and I believe that the council would have preferred that there was an end date to the extension. It was my understanding the council thought that if they needed an extension of time, a second extension of time, they could come back and request it because the council did not want an open-ended completion date. So I simply revised the resolution to state that Allied Real Estate Partners LLC has an extension of time up to and including February 28, 2023. And their original extension, or I mean, their original deadline was February 2022, so.
Okay. Council comments, questions? Public comments or questions? Seeing none, back to the council fraction.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 27-2020.
As amended.
As amended. You go with that. You want me to keep reading, though?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This is Resolution 02-2021, the annual cancellation of warrants.
Okay, this is just checks that have been outstanding for over two years. On, we can actually write them off with resolution. So these are all water, water checks, I believe, that probably have been refunds and those go out sometimes after people have moved on and we can't locate them, so.
There's a correction for the record. I believe I refer to this as Resolution 02-2021. It's actually Resolution 01-2021. So council comments or questions?
There are a couple of sewer, sewer ones on there, too.
But they've been pending for quite a while, correct?
Yes.
Is there any public comment or question concerning this resolution?
Yes, if I could.
Yeah, Russ, go ahead.
What is the total dollar amount this year, Sandy?
In the water, it is 1,563.61, and in sewer, it's 102.47. The water has quite a few outstanding, you know, ones that aren't, have been outstanding for a long time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, back to the council for action.
I move approval of Resolution 01-2021, cancellation of warrants.
Second.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is, I guess I'm going to need a little clarification here. Next is ordinance 2020-29, Town of Ellisville's Response Plan to COVID-19. It's listed as an ordinance on first reading. Is this because of the amount of amendments we asked for, Darla, or?
Um, I did not ask for it to be on first reading, but given the number of amendments, I don't think that was a bad idea in all honesty.
Okay.
We'll fill what we need.
And so at the previous council meeting, the council had asked to redact the portions of the policy that put limitations on the employee's ability to travel. So I changed that specifically. I redacted former paragraph 2.5. And also in section four, I redacted section 4.4. Section 4.3, I changed to say that any additional approval for paid sick leave shall be at the discretion of the, instead of the town council. It now reads the town employee's department head and the town manager. And that sick leave is in addition to what is currently required by federal law on the family's first coronavirus relief act, or response act, rather, and the additional time that the town council plans to give employees. There's a couple of other minor changes. I think the town council had asked me to toggle a little bit with the expiration date to make it clear that it was to expire when the governor of Indiana revokes or rescinds the Declaration of Public Health Emergency or the town council passes new policies. And I believe that's it.
Thank you for all the work on it. Are there council comments? While we don't normally on first reading because of the intricacies of this, and it's actually the second time we've heard it, is there public comment or question? Seeing none, we'll let this pin for the next meeting. Darla, is it possible to make this retroactive at our next meeting so in case we have an employee caught in the middle here? Or, I mean, I hope.
I think that's fine. I don't think there's a problem with that. Retroactive to what date?
I would say probably the start of the year since we, it was proposed to us beforehand, but we had to have some changes before we got it running here, and it'd be at least another two weeks before we get it going, presumably.
So retroactive to January 1 of this year?
If the council members are good with that, I just hate to see some employee get caught in the middle whenever we're we've been the ones to actually order the changes.
January 1 is good.
I'm fine with it.
Me, too.
Darla, would it be proper if they want to pass this to go ahead and vote to move it to second reading, or is it okay just to leave it as is?
If the council wants to follow that procedure, they can.
What's the council's purview? Do you feel comfortable passing it tonight, or do you want to wait for two weeks? Possibly solicit comment and or look at this a little further?
I'm fine with passing it tonight.
I agree.
Considering this happened, you know, two weeks, and this is really, this is an amended version of an original, I'm good with passing it tonight.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm good with it, too.
Sandy, do we have to use the specific wording since we've already once? Or Darla, one of you?
I normally provide some guidelines on that, and I don't have it with me tonight.
I'll remember it correctly.
There should.
Be a motion.
There should be a motion to pass this ordinance on first reading.
Okay. I believe it's that I would move that we pass this ordinance on first reading tonight.
Yes.
Well, that would be the original motion, and then after that passes, assuming it does, then we have the second vote, correct?
Yes.
Is there said motion?
I will make a motion. Do I need to second yours, or are you actually making the motion, Scott?
I was just kind of hopefully laying out the template correctly.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2020-29, Town of Ellisville Response Plan for COVID-19 on first reading.
Second.
Motion in the second, Sandy.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
A motion to?
I believe there's a motion to submit ordinance 2020-29 for first reading, and then there's a vote to pass ordinance 2020-29.
Okay. I want to make that motion.
I move we approve ordinance 2020-29, Town of Ellisville Response Plan for COVID-19.
I'll second that. And Dan, I'd like to propose the amendment that it's retroactive till 1 January 2021.
Yes, sorry. With the amendment, retroactive to January 1, 2021.
And I'll second the amendment. Sandy, Rocco.
And Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager. Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you all for that. There are no ordinances on second reading. There is no old business. There is no flood report, correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Okay. There is no new business as listed, so we'll move to privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council on an item not part of the normal agenda?
Hey, don't look at me.
Yes, Russ.
Dan, or Scott? I have a procedural question. It'll probably fall in Darla's lap. On the planning commission agenda, there was a item about amending or giving permission to variance from an approved plan. And I'm wondering why that was taken to the planning commission rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Darla, I can answer that.
Are you talking about this Centennial Park waiver?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin can probably answer that, but the town code does allow for the plan commission to grant waivers for development plans. So that is part of the code, and it does say the plan commission grants those waivers.
Okay, thank you.
And if Kevin was.
Sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
The difference between the waiver and the variance is variances are anything under chapter 152, which is zoning. The waivers are under chapter 153, which is the subdivision regulations. And the way the state sets it out is that anything with the subdivision regulations goes through plan commission instead of the BBA.
Okay, thank you. My education improves every time I ask a question.
Anyone else with a comment for privilege of the floor? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to supervisor comments.
I, I wanted to bring up the property and liability insurance. I didn't get it on the agenda, but it is time to renew that, and I put it in your packet. We had a supervisors meeting today. We also had Lisa Sloan attend the meeting to answer any questions the supervisors might have had. And after looking everything over, the supervisors have recommended the intact policy.
Okay, you want us to go with that this evening, or do you want to bring something else back later?
Well, I think if you, if you're comfortable with the supervisor's recommendation, I would like for you to make a motion to accept that. It is in the back of your packet. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. The big thing that stood out with this policy, I believe, was the deductibles and in the in that some of the liabilities in employment practices, law enforcement deductibles, they were half the price of the other policies. So that was one of the big pluses.
How's the council feel about this? Do you want to take time to look at it, or are you comfortable with the information we've been provided?
In this case, on the policy, I'm comfortable with the supervisor's recommendation.
I'm fine with it, too.
Is there any further council comments besides what we've just discussed? All right, any public comment on this? And back to the council for action.
How do we need to phrase it exactly?
I would say that we approve the intact. Is that correct, Sandy?
Yes.
We select the intact policy for our use, I guess.
Well, could I, could I say a suggestion motion, and then they could agree or disagree?
I'll make the motion, so I don't mind. Go, I'm, I'm good with it, and Scott is, and everybody else.
To accept the proposal from intact for the 2021 property and liability insurance at the cost of
Okay, I'm probably not going to remember all of that, so how about I propose that we accept the property liability insurance by intact for $169,000 and some change? Is that correct?
It's $121,000.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Sandy, please.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Chief Corman, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not. Thank you very much.
Motion Donald.
Do you have anything? Let me, do you have anything? Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see the other supervisors on here. If there's anyone that does have something, now be your trainee.
That'd be me, Michael Farmer.
Yes, sir. You were next, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, I want to talk about a work session. We all, we all were talking about having it next Monday, but Monday is a holiday. So 1/19, which is Tuesday, I propose having the work session. Will the board be able to attend if we do have it on Tuesday instead of Monday?
Yes, I already had it penciled in on Tuesday.
Okay, great, great, great. At the work session, I think we'll spend a few minutes. Kevin will address any questions about how ordinances are enforced. And, you know, some of the stipulations when we have ordinances of how we go about having them changed, if we want them changed. I think this conversation started with some concerns about our fence ordinances in town, so we want to talk about that. We will be sending some information prior to the work session about proposing to enter into a fleet management program with Enterprise to purchase certain vehicles. And so we want to give you some information on that, maybe get some input back before we move forward to propose a contract. We also want to talk about our options as it goes with annexation around Ellisville and what our future plans are for land use, growth. So that's what I think we'll talk about. I don't expect the meeting to be short. I expect it to be long, so you might want to bring some crackers or something. And so the other thing I want to talk about tonight, does anybody have a comment about the work session?
Mike, are we doing that on Zoom, or?
I know. I, I'd like for it to be in person. I think we can socially distance. Everybody wear masks. And I'd really like to have it in person. And, and that is counter to what I've been doing up till now, but I really think it's important to have it in person. But I serve at your pleasure. What do you want to do?
If we do it, I mean, we just, we have to open it to the public. That's correct, right, Darla?
Yes, if it's a work session, yes, you have to advertise it and open it to the public, yes.
Darla, I did it in the annual publication. Does it require more notification than that?
Could you, just to be on the safe side, would you send out another notice?
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question. And I don't foresee a big crowd, but what happens if we do reach a big crowd, or what should we limit the number of people attending, or?
Yeah, I mean, if we do have a big crowd, we would have to deal with it, and then if it become unsafe, then I'd be willing to walk away, or we could make everybody sit outside and listen through the doors.
Well, I guess that was a question I was going to have. I mean, I think particularly because we are going to touch on annexations, and there's going to be frankly, some fear from some people about that. I, I expect it to draw more of a crowd than normal. I mean, again, Mike, I understand your desire to have it in person, but based on the COVID numbers, we're not better maybe on Zoom?
Well, can we have a, can we have a Zoom as well, so everybody can? Well, can we have a, can we have a Zoom as well, so everybody can stay home and still participate?
Traditionally, we don't have public comment at work sessions, so they would be able to listen to the council, not really interact as much. Darla, what's your feeling about a hybrid?
I'd have to look at that in all honesty. I don't, I can't give you an answer right now.
If we're going to do that, wouldn't cats be a better venue?
Yeah, but then we'd have to actually get them on the docket to come, and I don't know what other meetings they've got that night.
God.
Yes.
I think having a combined meeting is too challenging for lack of cameras and lack of going together. I think you have to do one of the, my recommendation would be do one or the other and not do a hybrid.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure on this?
Pam, you cut out. Would you repeat that?
I think we should just have it on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm good with Zoom as well.
I'm leaning towards Zoom also because I think more people can come in and observe.
I agree. I, I think Zoom better. Mike, I, I do understand wanting everyone there in person. It just scares me with what Scott said about annexations. We could have a big crowd and then have to cancel it. So probably Zoom would be the way to go.
Works for me.
Okay, that works. So Sandy, can you make those arrangements, please?
Yes.
Mike, give me.
Okay. The only other thing I have is just to keep you updated. I have made preparations to clear cut the property for the new maintenance building at the town hall. I have a proposal for a timber company to come in. They will cut the trees, remove them. They'll leave the stumps and the tops for us to clear out, which is what I expected. And they have given me a sum, and I was prepared to reveal that and move forward with the project. But I think I'm going to get a second, a second proposal. We will enjoy getting paid X number of dollars for the removal of approximately 100 trees in the 400 by 400 foot footprint of the new building. And then we also are going to cut out the ash that are in the woods because they are either dying or going to die. And then we have three other injured trees that we're going to take out for a total of 28 trees that would be outside the clear cut area. So I, I've got a, I've got a plan, and I am going to get a second proposal just to make sure we're getting the best proposal. And anybody got a, any questions?
Not so much about the trees, Mike, but you have like a timeline ahead for completion of this entire project?
The entire project?
Yes.
Well, let's see. Uh, I don't. I mean, if, if we can work out the funding, which I think we can, and that, I, I don't know how long that'll take. How long do you think it'll take to, Darla, for, for it to clear the hurdle for funding? I mean, I, I would say it'd be less than a year, but it could be a year. If, if we get a good start now, then we'll, we'll be working into the spring, and I, I just really can't estimate how long it'll take.
We're going to do public bidding on most aspects of the project, if not all aspects of the project. So that is going to take a while. And then we still need to file a report with the IURC with regard to the use of some of these funds. So we still need to do that. Because some of these, these funds are left over from another project. So we need to advise the IURC what we're, of what we're doing.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
That's all.
Any of the other.
I do have one more. I do have one more thing. I'd like to thank Dan for his leadership and support this year. I've worked really well with Dan, and he's been a lot of help. So thanks for that, Dan.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. It's been nice working with you, too. All of you, the supervisors.
Any of the other supervisors?
I'm good. Thank you.
I do have one more request. I need to get caught up again on signatures. So if everybody wouldn't mind to stop by town hall sometime this week, it'd be great.
Okay. Anyone else? Moving down to council comments.
I just want to echo the thanks for Dan. I mean, even though we had a pretty smooth year in 2020, nothing really major happened, any different. Dan did fine. Looks like 2021 starting off nice and calm. So Scott, I think we're in good position. So thank you.
Agree. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Andy?
Who is the second, please? Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:06 PM.